It is 6:30 PM. Calling to order this October 23 meeting of the Emeryville Planning Commission. Prior to the roll call, I'm going to go through the script pursuant to California Government Code, Section 54953. That's 54953. Vice Chair Henme will be participating by teleconference. The teleconference location has been identified in the notice and agenda for this meeting. Now can we have the roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Chafe?
Here.
Commissioner Gould?
Here.
Commissioner Martinez?
Here.
Commissioner Rivera?
Here.
Commissioner Small?
Here.
Vice Chair Henme?
Here.
And Chair Wax?
Here.
All are present, you have a quorum.
Vice Chair Henme, can I confirm that you can hear proceedings well?
Yes, it's very clear, thank you.
Do you have a copy of the agenda?
I do.
Is the agenda posted at your location?
Yes, it is.
And the location is publicly accessible?
Yes, it is, but nobody's shown up yet.
I don't know why. So that covers the last question. There are no members of the public at your location.
No.
All right, and fellow members of the commission, everyone can hear the vice chair? Perfect. All right then. Now is the time for public comment on any items that are not on the agenda. If any member of the public wishes to come forward and speak, you will have three minutes to do so. Seeing no one, moving on to approval of the action minutes August 28, 2025.
I move approval of the action minutes of August 28.
I'll second that.
Thank you on the motion by Commissioner Gould, seconded by Commissioner Chafe to approve the August 28, 2025 minutes. I'll call the roll. Commissioner Chafe?
Aye.
Commissioner Gould?
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Commissioner Small?
Aye.
Vice Chair Henme?
Aye.
And Chair Wax?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving on, item five, Committee Development Director's Report.
Thank you, Chair. For your report this evening, quick recap of city council actions since we last met. On September 2, the council held a study session on committee composition, that is, composition of the community advisory committees and the appointment process for those committees, and gave us direction on that, actions to be, you know, formalized at a later date. They authorized the execution of our annual Community Development Block grant agreement with the county, authorized execution of a contract amendment for interim chief building official services to be provided by WC3, received an update on the Art Center project, which included authorization of a contract with CCS for capital fundraising strategy services. At their meeting of September 16, the council proclaimed October as Arts and Culture Month in Emeryville, adopted the local hazard mitigation plan, as previously recommended by this commission, and authorized execution of a license agreement with Dorothy Dayhouse for the use of 4300 San Pablo Avenue, which is an item we're going to talk about a little later on the agenda. Events that recently happened, the Harvest Festival, of course, and then I mentioned Art and Culture Month, a ton of events, all kinds of things, and kicked off with the celebration of the arts, and then continued with every week, the tours, panel discussions, the opening of Gallery 4509 at the Emory, fantastic show by Pixar artists at that gallery, an event at Jared's Pottery, and all of these things occurred in October. There's one more event yet to occur, and we're very hopeful to be able to continue such a fantastic program into the future. Upcoming events include that this Saturday, there's a panel discussion that will be held with the audience intended to be artists that are interested in contracting the cities for public art, and so our own Amber Evans will be participating on that panel, and she deserves a lot of credit for pulling together just a tremendous amount of events and coordination to get this done. We're very happy with the outcome. Tomorrow's Movie in the Park, it's Nightmare Before Christmas. That's at Houshun Park. Saturday is National Takeback Day for prescription drugs. That'll be held at the Police Department from 10 to 2 Saturday, and of course, mark your calendars for the Tree Lighting and Holiday Parade event, which will be December 5 this year. That concludes my report. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Chad. Just wanted to ask if there's any, if there are any other details you could give us about the Art Center progress, and I'm glad to hear that we're starting with fundraising, but is it, are we still planning on using the property that we had first intended? And are there, like, what, is there any, you know, this, we've kind of recreated what we're doing with the Art Center a few times at this point. What's the direction right now?
Pursuant to the city council's direction, the point we're at now, yes, it's still this property behind City Hall, 4060 Hollis. It is to be new construction, not adaptive reuse of the existing building. An operations model analysis has been completed by our consultants that recommends using a nonprofit operator for the building as the first choice for operating model, and the fundraising work is underway, well, the strategy is underway now, and that work will conclude this calendar year with a report back to, in January. So that's where we're at. And so the fundraising is, the strategy that's being put together is to assess the degree to which we can raise funds, and that requires a lot of conversations. Those focus groups and interviews are being scheduled literally next week.
And is that, is that going to dictate in some way what the site will look like? A combination of Art Center office, housing, like, what, you know, what can we expect?
It may. We have a program now and a target that we're aiming for in terms of fundraising. Once we complete this analysis of what the capacity is, we'll be able to then, from there.
That will lend some information to that.
Exactly. And that's probably as much as I can get into without this being an agenda item.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? All right, thank you, Chad. Closing now. And moving on to disclosure of ex parte communications and identification of conflicts of interest. Does anyone have anything to disclose? Vice Chair Henme, not hearing anything, so saying no. Moving on to item seven, public hearings. Item one, BESS Berkeley Emergency Storm Shelter.
Is that showing up on screen? Okay, great. Good evening, commissioners. This project will probably look pretty familiar to you. So this is a use permit for the Berkeley Emergency Storm Shelter at 4300 San Pablo Avenue. The Berkeley Emergency Storm Shelter is a program under Dorothy Dayhouse. So again, the site location is 4300 San Pablo, at San Pablo and 43rd, the city's former rec center. And here's images of the San Pablo and the 43rd Street frontage, as they are. Oh, so for some project site history, in August of 2019, Planning Commission approved a family shelter operated by East Oakland Community Project at the site, and then in 2021, approved a similar use for building futures for women and children to use the site for office uses. In 2023, Planning Commission and City Council approved the use of the site as a shelter by in-site housing, and then similarly, in 2025, approved the temporary relocation of the Stair Center Shelter to the site where it currently is still operating. On September 16 of this year, City Council did approve a license agreement with Dorothy Dayhouse for the use of the site by the Berkeley Emergency Storm Shelter. So again, for some context and history, there are existing entitlements for a 68-unit, 100% affordable intergenerational housing project to be built by EAH. It was reviewed in 2022 and approved administratively in December of 2022. So EAH, as you can read in the staff report, is still working with the city to determine next steps for funding and does not anticipate breaking ground before fall of next year. So background, again, Dorothy Dayhouse is the operator for the Berkeley Emergency Storm Shelter. This is a co-ed, long-running winter shelter that operates from the months of November to April. So the current location, or the previously used location in Berkeley, is currently requiring some repairs. That means the program cannot operate or be occupied at the site for the season. So the shelter would, or would provide services for 25 participants at any given time. They do partner with the Alameda County Coordinated Entry System. Enrollments would occur on-site during specific intake hours, but considering the smaller number of participants and the limited intake hours, no lines are anticipated at the facility. It would operate 24 hours a day, and it would be staffed at all times with between two to three staff members. There would be no cooking on the site, meals would be delivered. It will use the same site layout as the Berkeley Stair Center as previously approved, including the existing portables and the shower trailer. Meal deliveries will continue to take place in the loading zone on 43rd Street once a day. Discards, trash composting, recycling will continue to be stored behind the security fence on the east side of the building, and there is no parking available on-site. So you can see here the general floor plan for the portables, including, apologies, there's no streets on here. So the bottom side is San Pablo, and then the right side is 43rd Street. That's my bad. So you can see the shower truck on the left of the site plan and the interior floor plan, basically, for the portables. So the portion shown in blue here would be used for office and storage uses for Dorothy Dayhouse. These areas shown in green would be the common areas, including a recreation and dining area, bathrooms, and the shower truck. And then the bedrooms would be here, so each of them would have two residents in them. And then that's the floor plan in total. In the site plan, you can see the loading area on 43rd Street, the discards area to the east of the site, and the shower truck. So the general plan designation is mixed use with residential. It's an major transit hub, and it is within the neighborhood retail overlay. It is in the mixed use with residential zoning district as well. There would be no changes to the floor area, since they'll be using the existing structures on-site, and no changes in building height. Since shelters, emergency shelters are considered commercial and institutional use types, residential density does not apply, no density bonus triggered, and no onsite parking provided. So based on previous calculations for similar uses at this site, there is a maximum parking requirement of 14 spaces. The applicant, again, estimates that peak staffing will be three staff members during the day, so potentially up to three staff members requiring parking spaces. As previously stipulated in the other use permits at this site, there are conditions of approval, noting that parking can be accommodated on Park Avenue and possibly on nearby commercial properties. In addition, per the license agreement approved by City Council, four parking spaces have been licensed to Dorothy Dayhouse for their use in the City Hall parking lot. So the findings are as follows. The proposed use is consistent with the general plan. The characteristics and design of the proposed use are compatible with the neighborhood. The use is compatible with utilities and emergency response systems. It contributes to the general well-being of the community, and it complies with planning regulations. So staff does recommend approval of the Berkeley Emergency Storm Shelter, subject to the conditions of approval. And Rashone Atkins from Dorothy Dayhouse, the program director, is here, and would like to say a few words.
Thank you. I just wanted to tell you.
Just speak directly into the microphone.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. So I just wanted to tell you all a little bit about Dorothy Dayhouse and the Berkeley Winter Shelter, previously known as BES. We're really hopeful about using this site. Unfortunately, the site that we previously have used is having some issues where people cannot reside for the winter, but the winter shelter benefits senior citizens most definitely. We have found that senior citizens that are not willing to go into permanent housing because of maybe financial things, they have decided to utilize the Berkeley Winter Shelter for the cold months of the year, right? And so I just wanted to tell you a little bit about the program. And so, of course, she explained to you what the seasonal operations are, but typically we serve up to 40 people, 25 at a time, but we try to place people over time into traditional shelters. So once we're able to build a relationship with the client, then we try to get them into a traditional shelter where they can be placed in the housing, which most definitely usually works. And so senior citizens that usually wouldn't go into housing, we're able to create those relationships, engage them, and get them into shelter where they can go into permanent supportive housing. And then also, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about our direct services. We invite other agencies to come in to bring the services to the client. So while we operate, we'll bring in Lifelong and Homeless Action Center and things of that nature to help that person to be able to gain income or to work on their health issues. So when we do transition them into a permanent shelter or housing situation, that they are connected to a wraparound service, okay? Another thing that I wanted to share with you were our outcomes. We have 99% of people that come through this particular shelter that do not return to the street at the end of this operation, at the end of operational seasons. So it's maybe one person is like, no. Most people go into a traditional shelter space or a permanent housing situation because of the engagement and relationship that we've built with them over that five-month period. Any questions?
I have a question for staff, actually. Does this not qualify for, like, SB 2? I'm surprised it needs a conditional use authorization.
That is a good question. Kristi?
It's like, because the state's been pretty clear about making sure that it's a ministerial process for shelters, and I just don't know if this one doesn't qualify, or if there's something changed in legislation that I'm not as familiar with, but.
No, you're correct. The law has changed on the shelter issue. This particular, it's, our code requires this use permit, and this particular site has been, like, used with, like, back-to-back use permits like this before, so one ends and the next one begins, but we can get back to you on that if, you know, I'll make sure that we check on our code and make sure that our, because I think we updated those requirements already in our last, in our.
I think the last housing, housing element cycle really, like, HCD was really taking a special look at that, and I know Emeryville went through a slightly different process.
No, it's a good point. It's a, it's a good point to check and make sure that the site is particularly compliant. We used to do a license, we still do a license requirement with this one, you know, which would be a ministerial action, but I will look into it, and if you give me a few minutes, continue your discussion, I'll get back to the commission one second.
Yeah, and just for, you know, reference, that just makes the process a little bit easier and a little bit faster and less worrisome, I would say, so, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Just out of curiosity, where do clients usually come from? Are they from this area, or it's an Alameda County-associated program, right? So is it drawing from a larger area?
North County. And so it's basically Emeryville, Albany, and Berkeley.
Okay. Thank you.
There's a right hand, me. I also have a question. Go ahead. So the question for the director is, what kind of demand do you have for the shelter? Are you, how many people? And secondly, I'm curious as to, are they, you're suggesting the demand, are the people served are almost all seniors? Are there others, younger folks that are trying to get in, or why would it be a senior citizen demographic? Thank you.
We're usually at capacity by the second week of intake, and I believe that, well, we serve anyone, anyone that comes within the first intake process and referral process will serve, and we have anyone over the age of 18. And so I believe that there are a higher number of senior citizens that are entering homelessness, and that's one of the reasons why we serve a lot of seniors at the shelter. Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners?
Sorry, Chair Wax, one more question for staff. Have there been any comments or complaints from neighbors about the current use?
None that I am aware of, and none that specifically were related to this use permit process. We've received no public comments on it.
Thank you.
Any more questions? All right then. Opening the public hearing, if there are any members of the public who wish to speak on this subject, please come forward. You will have three minutes. Seeing no members of the public, closing the public hearing and bringing this back to deliberation, commissioners, any comments?
So I just wanted to say that I think this is a wonderful program and a great use for a currently underutilized site, especially since we're not expecting construction until fall of next year, and this is a similar use to what it has been used for as we await construction, serving as a shelter in the past. So I would support a motion to approve this permit.
Yeah, I would like to say my only complaint about this is there apparently is just no money in the society to move the project forward that was supposed to be moving forward, but if it's going to be sitting there, I can't think of a much better use for it.
I agree with everything that's been said, and I'd be happy to make the motion to approve the conditional use permit, unless anyone else has other comments they'd like to share first.
Chair Wax, could I just answer Commissioner Small's question real quick? Perfect, thank you so much for asking it. So the new state law required as part of the housing element update, which you all got and reviewed, that the city establish some policies and programs to comply with the new law, and the new law requires that the city establish a zone where such, different kinds of shelters are allowed as a, by right use, as a permitted use. And so those zoning updates, I understand, are, you know, trailing our housing element adoption, and will come through eventually. So that was the law. The law requires us to establish that, that, that zone where they're allowed by right, and the city is in the process of doing that. We're not quite there yet, but as of now, this is how our, this use is governed here on this site.
Thank you very much for the clarification, and yeah, that's, I mean, there's a lot of enacting what's, what's come through in the housing element, so I'm really glad to hear it. And also, just in, like, fellow commissioners, I just, you know, I feel like this should be as easy and straightforward a process as humanly possible, and hopefully wouldn't have to come to us in the future, because it's just such an incredibly important thing that we're able to support.
We have a motion?
I'll move to approve the conditional use permit.
I'll second.
Thank you on the motion by Commissioner Chafe and seconded by Commissioner Gould. I'll call for a vote. Commissioner Chafe?
Aye.
Commissioner Gould?
Aye.
Commissioner Martinez?
Aye.
Commissioner Rivera?
Aye.
Commissioner Small?
Aye.
Vice Chair Henme?
Aye.
And Chair Wax?
Aye.
Thank you, the motion passes.
This is closing 7.1, and moving on to 7.2, bicycle parking.
Good evening, Chair, good evening, Commission. All right, so as mentioned, I'll be presenting tonight on proposed bicycle parking requirements, modifications. So why are we doing this? MTC Administrators OAB Grants, and again, I'm having a font problem, which is, you know, I had also downloaded a PDF version of this in case this happened, so if you don't mind, I can, is that all right with you? Okay, thank you.
I just can't believe there was any kind of a malfunction in the slide deck.
Oh, it is on desktop? Okay, thank you. Oh, I need to share it. Right, sharing, sharing is caring. Is that sharing? I'm sorry. I know how to use computers. Now that we have visual happiness, okay, so proposed modifications to our bicycle parking requirements, correct fonts and everything. So MTC Administrators OAB Grants, and starting in spring of 2026, there's a Transit-Oriented Communities Program Compliance is prioritized for new grants that are going to be issued. So Emeryville's Amtrak Station is a transit-oriented community identified by TOC, the half-mile area. We're not going to change something for a half-mile area in Emeryville, that is quite a significant portion of our city, we won't change it for the whole city. So here's the good news, Emeryville's already compliant with almost all the policies. Right now, we're going through the process of verifying, showing them, proving to them that we're compliant. However, we need to update our bicycle parking requirements, and again, not because we're not providing sufficient, but because of how our regulations are worded. Our residential is just fine in terms of, it's on a per-unit, and we provide more than MTC says we need to have, but for all other uses, they measure by square feet, and they only require that we do it by office. But why would we just change office use and nothing else? This is an opportunity for us to upgrade our bicycle parking regulations to make it easier to use and put our parking requirements in table format, which almost all other cities do, and just make it easier to use for everybody. So this is. So this is just a little snapshot. Okay, I took a little segment. Okay, it's not the whole thing. So our current Emeryville bicycle parking calculations refer to our estimated parking demand table for vehicles. And it says at a rate of one, one bicycle parking space for every 10 cars, right? So we went through and we did the conversion and saw what everything was. And this is just kind of showing you how that process worked. So doing a comparison of Emeryville to other local jurisdictions, we found that there is a lack of consistency. So then the question becomes, is what we're doing now working for us? And the staff was not aware of any shortcomings and what we're providing in terms of total amount. It's again, the wording and then providing the, the table and the chart. And so going through that process, we looked at Oakland and Berkeley because they're neighboring, Alameda, because we have a lot of overlap in policy, San Francisco because everybody asks, Davis because bikes, and Sacramento and LA because they've been working with their bike parking a lot lately. So what I'm showing you right now is just little snippets, real quick shots of what other tables look like. So you can kind of get an idea of where, what we were looking at to see where we should go. And so the last one was San Francisco, Davis, Sacramento. And they have a little bit more complicated thing because they have urban and suburban areas. But you'll see it's largely simplified uses for most jurisdictions. They don't list every single use type like we do on our estimated parking demand table. It's simplified usually to a one-page chart. The majority of them do that. So looking at how to do this, we use methodology of replacing multiple calculations with primarily square footage. And then the other measure we use is TBD, so to be determined. And these are for uses, a good example would be schools, because a school could be very, very different. You could have a school come in on the north side of town and be for 50 kids that are, you know, elementary school. You could have a school come in that's a huge high school on the south side of town. Those are very different parameters. So yes, it's the same use, but there's going to be a lot of variation with that same use. So you look at it as a case-by-case situation along with the use permit and do an assessment. We already have that in our table. This would, we're just continuing that and changing it a little bit. So as I mentioned, we surveyed cities and there was a wide variation in what they did. So we're basically keeping what we have, but rounding for convenience. And then create the simplified table for bike parking similar to other cities. And then for our square footage calculation, defining square footage is what we already use in our code, because different cities define square footage in different ways. So we need to be explicit about that. So this is a snapshot of the attachment that you received with the staff report. So it would fit on one page in our planning code. And in terms of where we are in this process, this went to BPAC. And BPAC was generally very supportive of this. They raised existing concerns about residential, specifically for studio and bedrooms, if our current rates are sufficient for parking. And what staff recommended to them is that we come back and look at that separately because for MTC, they do not have a problem with our residential parking. We exceed that. And we would like to be able to be eligible to receive grant money through MTC. So let's focus on this and get this taken care of. And then to really go back and spend some time and look at residential if they choose to do that. We'll note that they asked about current residential buildings and if they comply with the current code and you receive an attachment for that showing that most do not, because most of our buildings were approved before 2009 and did not require bike parking. So yes, there are many buildings that have insufficient bike parking in the city, but that does not reflect our current code. That's why we've changed the code to address that issue. Transportation sustainability, oh, sorry. So BPAC recommended approval of everything, but wanted to wait to talk more about residential. So we're going back to them in November. Transportation and sustainability, recommended approval moving forward. It's not going to go back in November because they say they did not, did not need to do that. We're here for you tonight for any comments and feedback you have before moving forward. I'm going to circle back to BPAC like as we discussed. And then the plan is to come back here in December for recommended approval to City Council in January. And then we get to notify MTC. Hopefully we are compliant. And that is the story. And if you have any questions, here I am.
Commissioners, any questions?
Is, with regards to the TOC compliance, is the bike parking the only area? I know that the, the policy that MTC has, there's different criteria for compliance. Is the bike parking the only one where we're addressing this now? Or is there other?
This is the only one that requires a code change.
Okay.
Yep. It's the only one. And like I said, it's not because we are, have insufficient requirement. It's our wording that's triggering this. So.
Any other questions? Go ahead.
I have less of a question and more just, I look forward to talking about bicycle parking. Maybe Emeryville has like a higher level of interest in this than maybe other places, just because we're like all on bikes all the time. But there's definitely been questions about e-bikes. And I know that this probably isn't necessarily part of the MTC conversation, but in general, there's a lot of worry around having batteries in various indoor parking situations. I know that the fire marshal has been worried about it or different kinds of building departments have been worried about it. So I was just wondering a little bit about how that's entered into some of the conversation around required bicycle parking, because I think that a lot of cities are really concerned about like allowing that to happen. And there have been a lot of even municipal buildings that have prevented e-bike interior parking. So just wondering how that's, how that conversation's gone here.
Yeah, you're right. And that MTC is not addressing that as part of this. It's, it's outside of that conversation. And it's absolutely a conversation that BPAC has had, that we have had as staff. When we updated our bike parking standards along with our objective standards, we did require there to be outlets in, in those rooms. And that is something that for the reasons you mentioned is, that can be revisited and when we make modifications to bike parking in the future. As a matter of fact, planning staff went to symposium at Davis yesterday and attended bike parking session there. And that was absolutely a hot topic that people were discussing about how to handle that. So.
Related to that, I think one of the other comments that comes up is a lot about the size of the space and whether it's vertical versus a traditional horizontal. Is that part of this discussion right now? Because that could qualify like, you know, the size of what you're providing for bike parking seems like it does need to be taken into account early on.
So that is also not part of this discussion. This is only the amount per square footage. So it's only the ratios that you're providing that are discussed. We do have requirements about both of those things already in our code that were updated when we did those objective standards. And so it caps, there's a limit to the amount of vertical bike parking or stacked second level bike parking you can have. And then we also have requirements at 10% for what we classify as large bicycles. And they have a larger bicycle footprint to them as well. So we have addressed those in our code quite recently. And I don't think there's any projects that have been built yet that fully incorporate those. So that's the problem. We, we incorporate these and then there's a lag. And we're like, why doesn't that have that? It's like, well, there's that lag.
So if I understand correctly, if, if something were to change because of the update that is happening here, that it's like a percent of large spaces that is in the code now that would be applied to the.
Correct.
Data piece.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yep.
So is it the intention that BPAC would have an updated recommendation for proposed short-term and long-term spaces per residential unit at their November 3 meeting? Or are they gonna, are they gonna approve a package and then move on and then continue to discuss?
They've already recommended approval for everything except residential. And they basically wanted more time to talk about it. And they wanted to have us come back with that information of what are, is what they're experiencing based on current code or based on outdated code?
Yeah.
So now that we have that answer for them, I helped, I think that will help guide their discussion. And then they can decide from there if they would like to reopen looking at residential requirements further. I would also like to note, and I noted this to BPAC as well, in, in our ATP, one of our policies is specifically to look at how to develop a program for existing buildings, both residential and commercial, and how to provide more parking at those, recognizing that parking is a significant part of, of bicycle infrastructure. Staff is following up on that. We do not have a program in place. We do not have funding identified. We are looking at other cities that do have programs to try and see what may or may not work here. So at some point in the future, I will be, you know, I'll have an update on that, but we're not there yet.
This conversation may, may continue, but we can at least get this underway.
Yes.
And qualify for grants.
Absolutely.
Any more questions, commissioners, vice chair? All right then. Opening the public hearing. Any members of the public wish to make a comment? You all have two minutes, three minutes to do so. Seeing no members of the public, closing the public hearing and bringing it back to deliberation. Commissioners, any comments, motions, anything? Nothing. Neither.
Commissioner Wax, Chair Wax, sorry. I do have, well, first off, I, I support the changes that are recommended. I think they're logical and to convert it to square footage area requirements is definitely the way to go. But I did want to pass along hopefully a comment to BPAC about the residential requirement. And this comes from the standpoint of a bike user. I rode my bike to work every day, never used a car. But I'm also an architect who does a lot of affordable housing and senior housing. And I'd have to say that every other city that we've worked with has a one-to-one requirement for all units. So Emeryville has already exceeded the requirement. And secondly, Emeryville has created a greater area requirement for the bike parking by having the 50% maximum stackable or vertical. Almost, I'm not aware of other cities having that kind of requirement. And then finally having the cargo bike requirement as well. And this is coming from a standpoint that, for example, affordable housing is running at something like more than $600 a square foot to construct. So if your bike parking space is increased by 100 square foot, that's $60,000 that gets added to our budget for affordable housing. And secondly, from what I've heard from all of, from other buildings, is that bike parking is not max, is not at a maximum, is not maximized. There's almost always with the one-to-one requirement, empty space. So I would really recommend that BPAC does not increase the residential requirement because it does have a financial impact on the cost of housing. And the other thing, ground floor space in housing is very tight. A lot of times, you know, we have the lobby, we have offices, we have mechanical, electrical rooms, et cetera. And so to, and the bicycle parking is usually on the ground floor. And so it, it has a lot of impacts, detrimental impacts on the housing. So I hope they will take that into consideration when they meet about the residential parking. Thank you.
Go ahead, Sam.
So I also want to say that I am supportive of this move to using per square foot for bike parking. I think that just makes sense. And actually, related to what the vice chair was saying, I saw a report recently come out of the Netherlands where they were thinking of decreasing their bike parking requirements of 1.7 space per unit, because they were finding that it was infeasible cost-wise to meet that demand in terms of a square footage, which if you add up our one per unit for one bedroom and below and two per unit for two bedrooms up, it gets pretty close to that same 1.7 bike parking per unit that the Netherlands is struggling with right now with how much they bike around. Not that we're really looking at that today, but I just find that interesting. Like you always hear about the high cost of free parking, but there's also the moderate cost of bike parking. I stole that joke. That wasn't mine. But I like how we got to see the charts of the different cities take what everyone else does, but do it slightly better. I feel like that's a very classic Emeryville thing. So I, I liked all the numbers that we saw in terms of how the square foot of commercial space maps to bike parking. So I'm supportive.
Continuing on that line of thought, it would be really interesting to know, and I think there is at least one example of a fairly recently built affordable housing complex in Emeryville that probably has a good amount of bike parking. And just, I don't know if you've checked in yet to see if it's being used. Yeah, any, any feedback on that?
The, the building is not fully occupied yet, but I went there for an inspection, actually of their, their bike parking room specifically. And at that time, no spaces were used yet. And they have, I think, slightly more than one space per unit, just because of the way the racks worked. So right now, and again, it's not fully occupied. I think it was maybe a quarter occupied at the time. There were not any bikes at that time in the bike, bike room yet.
Maybe it's worth thinking about differentiating between affordable housing and non-affordable housing in the future. It seems like a bit of a dangerous thing to have different standards, but could be a useful thing to look into. Yes.
I will say that affordable housing projects can, they're, they're allowed to have exceptions and waivers to, if there's something that demonstrates that it's infeasible or adding unnecessary costs to the project. And so they get waivers from requirements. And that so for an example of the Nellie Henning Gateway, they waive the requirement to have balconies, for example. So bike parking would be something that could be modified as part of that process automatically.
Thank you. That's really helpful.
On that note, you know, in the city of Berkeley, there's been a notable rise in waivers for SB 330 projects for bike parking. And we've heard from developers that the main reason for that is the cost and the space, the dollar amount per, you know, bicycle parking space. So I think it's a trend that some of these developments are overparked with regards to bicycle parking. And I would agree with our fellow commissioners that, that I would support an increase in that residential parking. I think we're compliant now. If anything, lowering the, the amount for residential bike parking would be more desirable. And then I'm always supportive of making the zoning organs easier to understand and apply. And generally supportive of creating tables and tying the commercial bike parking to square footage and unbundling it from the residential use.
Okay. Does anybody have any further comment on this item? Anyone want to put forward a motion?
You don't need to, if you don't.
You don't need to put forward a motion.
Yeah, we really.
That's right.
Because we're coming back.
We are coming back.
Yeah.
All right. Well, in that case, closing this item and moving on to planning commissioner comments. Anybody have any comments before we adjourn this meeting? Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you to all the staff that have been involved with the arts events. It's just an incredible lineup this month. I saw the calendar. I was like, how is this humanly possible? I mean, 1% couldn't even go to all of them, little and plan them. So congratulations. I went to the Pixar opening. It was really great. So nice to see the use of that space.
Any other comments, commissioners? We are adjourned. 7:18.